Now disclosures of pecuniary interest, do we have any to declare tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right into the agenda. Under the planning matters, I'd like to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a recognition of a three-unit dwelling at 5415 Elm Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 28, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlavich. I'd like to ask our Director of Planning to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Worship. The property is located on the north side of Elm Street and, slight technical glitch, excuse me, the property is located on the north side of Elm Street, east of Stanley Avenue. It's in a neighborhood which is predominantly singles and semis detached and duplex dwellings. But in looking at this particular property and the application in question, the properties outlier highlighted in blue, we also found that in the neighborhood there are a number of dwelling units with four units, six units, and three units. So it is a rather mixed neighborhood in terms of use. The applicant has requested an R3 zone that would recognize the three dwelling units that exist in the building, and it would also necessitate a change to permit the third unit to be located in the area that we call the cellar of the building. The site plan is the one in your report. The applicant is, in addition to seeking the R3 zone for this property, seeking a number of modifications. This is to recognize deficiencies in the property as it was built at the time of the previous zoning bylaws. It's non-conforming with respect to these side yards. It complied when the building was initially constructed. So the lot frontage for the existing building would be recognized as existing. The front yard setback is a little over four meters. That would be recognized as existing, as would the side yard setback. Over on the side yard, I would point out that there is a set of stairs on the east side of that building, and that's the stairway that leads to the basement unit. We'd also be looking to recognize the floor area of each unit as existing. The bylaw change would be to allow additional parking in the rear yard, so we would be increasing the parking area from 40 square meters to 110 square meters in order to facilitate three parking spaces. Normally, our bylaw would require four parking spaces for a three-unit building, but because of the size of the units, we don't expect that these will be units with multiple cars. There is still an area at the back of the property, the north end of the property, that would be reserved for amenity for the residents of the site. The lot area would be as existing. That should be recorded as 445 square meters. I believe the report actually says 455 square meters. I'm sure the agent can speak to that and clarify that for sure. As well, the last zoning change on this is that in order to provide all of the parking in the back of the building, 38 percent of the lot would become parking and driveway, whereas the bylaw provides for a maximum of 30 percent. The applicant has requested the R3 zone to permit the existing three-unit dwelling with the reduced parking standards I mentioned. The site is currently zoned residential, single-family, and two-family, R2 by bylaw 79-200. We learned about this particular application as a result of a complaint about the third unit. That was resolved by the unit having been vacated, and that unit has been vacant for some time. There was also a complaint about debris and the condition of the property, and that has also been cleaned up to the bylaw enforcement officers' requirements. We held a neighborhood meeting on this property in August. Two neighbors did attend the property. They noted a number of concerns. Again, they felt the access into that cellar unit was too narrow and that the residents of that basement unit were trespassing onto their property. The dwelling, they felt, did not comply with the building or fire code requirements. They had a history on the property of property standard violations. They've addressed that. They noted that the tenants in the cellar unit had been noisy and disruptive, and noted as well those tenants have now left the building. And there are two additional letters in the council package tonight with very similar concerns. We did get the comments of our property standards division. They again have confirmed that the dwelling unit in the cellar is vacated, and the debris on the property has been removed, and therefore their files are closed on that. The building would require a building permit for that third unit in the dwelling. The building was built initially as a two-unit building, so the third unit would require a separate building permit, and that would need to comply with the Ontario Building Code requirements. Transportation services looked at the site. We haven't had any reported complaints about parking on the property adjacent to it, and Elm Street is a street that does not permit overnight parking. I would add that most of Niagara Falls doesn't permit overnight parking. In reviewing the application as well, we looked at the provincial policy statements, and the provincial policy requires that municipalities encourage the various housing types and that we provide for residential intensification. This three-unit building is in fact a form of residential intensification. The official plan for the area designates this area as residential, includes single-family, two-family, and triplex dwellings. The residential development must also be integrated into the communities in order to be sensitive and compatible with surrounding development. In viewing the three-unit dwelling then, we found that the dwelling is a low-density form of housing as envisioned by the official plan. The three-unit dwelling is not inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood. I pointed out that there's a mix of singles, semis, and duplexes, as well as a number of other four-to-six-unit properties in the area. The municipal services, including the roads, can support the three-unit dwelling, and the property is large enough to provide the three parking spaces at the rear of the building, as we saw earlier in the site plan. The applicant's requested a zone change. As I mentioned, the zone is currently R2. That dates back to 1979, rather. The building was built prior to that. The third unit in the cellar was constructed in the 1980s. It was contrary to the zoning bylaw, and so basically the request for the R3 zone is to fix that situation. I mentioned as well already the site-specific adjustments for the property would recognize the lot area, lot frontage setbacks, and a number of other requirements for the driveway. There would also be the reduction from four units to, or four parking spaces to three parking spaces. We feel this is acceptable, given again the small size of the units. We don't expect them to be large families where they would have multiple units. As well, we'd have to recognize that one of the dwelling units would be located in the cellar. Our bylaw currently does not provide for that, but that's a reflection, because again the bylaw is more than 30 years old, of the building code standards at the time. The building code has been amended since that time, and the building code now allows for cellar units as long as you meet code requirements. As I mentioned earlier as well, a building code, or a building permit will be required, and they would have to address all of the regulations of the Ontario Building Code, including ingress and egress. Our conclusion therefore is that the request of the R3 zone is appropriate. We can support it because it represents a modest increase in intensification, which is promoted by the provincial policies. The three dwelling units are permitted by the official plan policies. The building will not be expanding. It will be existing, and therefore there is no physical outward change to the building. The character of the dwelling is actually similar to other buildings in the area in terms of height, massing, and setbacks. The use is compatible with the surrounding singles, semis detached, and multiple-unit dwellings in the neighborhood, and the site is large enough for three parking spaces. So that should address any parking concerns. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve the application to rezone the land through a site-specific R3 zone and to recognize the existing three-unit dwelling on the property, subject to the provision that the prepared parking lot containing three parking spaces be created in the rear yard. Those are the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlavich. We're going to look for some comments or questions from council. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, just a few questions through you to Mr. Hurlavich. Mr. Hurlavich, there is a letter of concern regarding the property here. I wonder if you could tell me which one of these items refer to planning? "Driveway access blocked on numerous occasions, noise from revving cars and barking dogs, yelling, swearing, and fighting from domestic disputes, backyard fires, overnight street parking, late-night parties, which we're not invited to, property standard violations, and tenant noise." Which one of those relate to planning issues?
If any of those, that would be the parking issue in the driveway. Again, bylaw does require three parking spaces, parking spaces. And if the driveway was blocked, then obviously, otherwise, those are not.
If the driveway is blocked, you call the police department or the parking people to ask them to move the car. So also, the letter that is written here says, "We are opposed therefore to the rezoning of the application for the property known as 5415 Elm Street. The contents of this letter may be used for determination of your decision, but under no circumstances must the name or address of the centers be made available to the public." In other words, make your decision, but don't tell them where it came from. I find that particularly offensive, and in spite of that, I guess somebody made a determination to put it on the agenda, but there's still no addresses here, so we know what kind of impact and effect. And I was also going to ask that the building, the picture of the building be put up there, which is if you look up and down the street, you'll find that this is certainly a building that is outstanding on the street. It actually is quite presentable. I understand that the violations regarding the debris, and I've been fooling around with this piece of property for about, over a year now. When I went out there to see the debris on the property, it was tricycles and kids and wagons and other children's apparatus. Is that considered debris or offensive?
No, that wouldn't be debris.
I have more to say about this later.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wing.
I'd like to note there's also a letter from a different neighbor in our handout, and this person is suggesting that if they'd ever seen any kind of effort put into the property, like mowing the lawn, replacing the windows, proper fencing, that sort of thing, they wouldn't be so opposed perhaps. But I think the most telling sentence is where they note that the tenants are not the type of people they'd want to attract to or encourage to live in their neighborhood. And contrary to what Counselor Thompson thinks, I believe that tenant issues are very much related to planning issues, you know? The things like yelling, swearing, and fighting from domestic disputes, I don't know if you get that in your neighborhood at all. Backyard fires, I don't know if that happens in yours either, or late-night parties. I mean, the sort of things that I see described here are what I have seen happen in neighborhoods surrounding my own. The problem is when you get too much density in converted housing stock, that's when you start to attract the type of tenants who cause nothing but problems for their neighbors. I've watched this happen on my own street. In fact, one triplex was such a headache for our neighborhood for so long that when it came on the market, I bought it and turned it back into a duplex for which it's legal just to bring some peace to the neighborhood again. You know, it shouldn't be like that. But you know, I'm seeing this trend more and more in the older neighborhoods where you end up with illegal triplexes. They disrupt the neighborhood, the good people move out, you know, more absentee landlords buy them up, turn them into duplexes, illegal tries, that sort of thing. And now, you know, away goes the neighborhood. So when people rate and say they have concerns about decreases in property value, they're not making it up. It happens. And you know, I really support what the province is trying to do to prevent urban sprawl by encouraging intensification within the urban boundaries. But there is a vast difference between three units in a purpose-built building and three units in converted, older building stock. And I can tell you, the type of people who are willing to live in a cellar are probably not the type of people you'd want in your neighborhood either. You know, and I know the province wants us to intensify, but I don't think their intention is for intensification to lead to urban light and decay. And that's what this sort of thing does. You know, I look at this, and according to what the neighbors and the staff are saying, you know, there's a pretty poor stewardship track record here. There's lots of reductions in standards being requested. The bylaw currently prohibits dwelling units and cellars, and I really think that is still for a reason. And you know, we've got somebody who's now coming and asking for forgiveness instead of permission, and I honestly think that this is an issue on which we need to really draw a line in the sand. This is just a little too overboard. Parkside, a few years ago, you know, we had an R1 area where somebody illegally converted a unit there into a duplex. Council turned down the staff's recommendation that we legalize it. Okay, Parkside, it's a newer neighborhood, probably about $300,000 for these homes. This one, older neighborhood, maybe $100,000, probably $150,000 perhaps. Just because this is this neighborhood and Parkside was that neighborhood doesn't mean you can't, you shouldn't be treating them equally. People who own-
Point of order. I thought this was a questioning period, questions to the planner or whatever.
Fair enough. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Is there, at this point, Counselor Wing, is there anything you wanted to ask of the planner? Because we're going to bring up the agent, and then we can-
Okay. I will ask, how does he not see, thinking about this city and the way certain neighborhoods have gone in the last couple decades, how he does not see a relation between planning matters and the type of tenants that get attracted to streets where there are too many older housing units which have been converted into purposes which are much denser than those for which they were originally intended? Because I see those.
Mr. Hurlavich, you want to address that?
I believe the counselor is well aware that we zone by land use and not by people, so we don't look at their income, we don't look at their education, we don't look at the color of their skin, or anything else about them. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurlavich. Are there any other questions of our planner by council? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Do we have someone? Okay, sir, would you like to step forward to the microphone and state your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Roger Pike. I live at the corner of Stanley and Maple Street, all right? And there is vacant land that is alongside me on Stanley, and there is vacant land that is facing on Elm Street, all right? This was a designated park area, but anyways, it's being sold by the city through public auction, all right? Now, this is irrelevant to your whole issue here, but anyways, that whole block where that house sits, 5415 Elm, you've taken it now, and that whole area was at one time R2, probably, all right? And then it was converted in different sections to R3, R4, multiple dwelling, everything else. And you use that as a precedent for that whole block, that, oh, well, we've got buildings that have got four units, six units, three units, everything else. Now you're changing the whole structure of that block, all right? That whole block is now, as you add more mobile dwellings to single-unit houses, rather than having an R2, you're going to an R3. Why didn't the person go for an R4? Why didn't the person go for R5? You see what I mean? Like, you're changing that whole area. It's a non-strictly residential area now to multiple-family area, all right? Now is that going to be the same score for the block that I live in, which is only one block away?
And you're on Maple-
Because those properties that were sold by the city through auction were deemed R2. Now is there anything stopping that person that bought that property in applying for an R3?
Let me get an answer. Mr. Hurlavich, would you like to-
See, I mean, you've already started.
Hold on a second. We'll get an answer to your question. Mr. Hurlavich?
Yes, he could apply.
So the council is one that could stop that. And if we didn't, and the planner said it was a good idea, then it could be appealed at the Ontario Municipal Board. So anyone can apply.
Yeah, but where does it stop? Where does it stop? Where does it stop? You deemed an area R2, all right? From the start, all right? And now you've got sections of it that have got four-family units, six-family units, three-family units? Like, I mean, why is the, why is the whole intention in the first place of taking it and making it an R2 area? Like, you have different areas in the city that warrant multiple-family dwellings, all right? Now you've taken older, older single-family units and turning them into multiple-family units, you know?
Well, maybe, Mr. Hurlavich, is there any, you know, the Places to Grow Act or any indication that the province is leading us down this path of intensification or anything to help kind of justify what's happening here?
Well, the, you know, our Counselor Wing alluded to this earlier, and that is, the province's requirements are that we intensify within our built boundaries, and so we're encouraged to increase the number of dwelling units. The process though is that we come to a public meeting where, you know, your staff is able to present its information as it's gathered from observation, as well as consulting with its various divisions and outside agencies, brings a report to you, and then the public has its opportunity to present its view, and then the council makes the decision based on the input from the public as well as the staff.
And in terms of this area specifically, on Elm Street, is there any, you know, can you give any indication as to why it's happened here, or any idea why it seems to be happening in this street?
It's happened in many of the areas of the downtown, or as Counselor Wing has pointed out, in the main and ferry area, where you have larger, older buildings which quite often lend themselves to conversion, partially because family sizes have reduced. Those are some of the principal reasons.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So was there any other questions, sir, you wanted to ask of our planning staff at this point?
Why you are doing this? Like, it's, you know, it all comes down to revenue for the city, I'm sure, but it's, you're ruining an area, all right, that is strictly a residential area for the people that are single-family residents in that area. You know, you're overcrowding that area, for one, all right? And you don't see this happening in Calgary Estates. You don't see this happening in Mount Carmel. You don't see this happening anyplace else. Or someone's taken a basement and turning it into a park, you know? I mean, those areas are high, high areas, high.
Well, I can tell you, I know that there's changes coming forward to the official plan that will expand this kind of intensification. You'll see it probably coming later this year. But Counselor Thompson, you wanted to, did you have a comment?
I want to finish.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, in, finally, saying the fact that, you know, these areas like Calgary or Mount Carmel or anywhere else, I'm sure they wouldn't be allowed to take a building and put an apartment in a basement.
Well, I don't, let's find out.
I don't know.
Mr. Hurlavich, could somebody do that in some of those neighborhoods? Could somebody bring forward an application?
They could, sure, they could bring an application forward. There's the same residential zone or designation that says one, two, or three family units. So an application could happen. I'd even go so far as to suggest that there are probably new areas of the city that have basement units in them already. I read the real estate ads that say, "In-law suite," they call them, to suggest that there's some legal way of getting around it. But in actual fact, they are likely not zoned for that particular use. We can't go around catching all of them, so it's when the applications come in by complaint, then we bring them forward and we can deal with them in this open forum, and that's where we're at now. Certainly the old areas of the city, this has happened, you know, in a progressive and successive way, but this pattern that we see on Elm and Bridge Street is not unlike the pattern that we find downtown. What most people know, I lived on Jupson Street for almost 20 years, and I watched the buildings change from one family to two family, and some of them would change back to one family when the next person bought it because they wanted a large old house. Somebody else wanted an investment. So they do fluctuate. We heard from Counselor Wing, I hate to keep bringing her up, but again, she mentioned a unit that was our building in her area that was three units that she converted back to two. So we do see those fluctuations. But certainly when we're looking at land use compatibility, we're looking to see, are there similar characteristics? So, you know, the map in front of us really shows that there are a number of multiple-family units. So the characteristic of the neighborhood is one that there are multiple units. And so therefore, one more unit is more likely going to blend in. And those are the things that we're looking for with respect to compatibility when we're looking at land use.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the only thing that I'd like to add to the conversation right now is just to say that in the newer subdivisions, as the gentleman has mentioned, maybe perhaps not Calgary Estates, but the other subdivisions that we have, there's guidelines set out as to what you can build for single-family homes, and then there's your multiple dwellings, and then there's your, and even greater density. And I believe Alex can tell us what the splits are, but is it 35, 35, 30, where R1, R2, R5 in newer subdivisions?
Well, basically, we're trying to achieve something in the range of a 60-40 split, where 60 percent of the units would be one- and two-family units, and 40 percent of the units would be either townhouses or apartments. But we basically group singles, semis, and duplexes into one category, which is 60 percent of the units. And we're certainly promoting that. We've got a little way to go yet. Probably overall within our city, something more like a 70-30 split, 70 percent singles and semis, 30 percent multiples. Most of those multiples though are, again, those that have been designed as multiple-unit buildings, apartments, townhouses in newer subdivisions.
And the only other thing I'd like to mention is, I know the gentleman said that this probably wouldn't happen in newer subdivisions, and I think it was only last year, maybe a year and a half ago, where we received an application for a home on Parkside, and the entire neighborhood was single-family, and a homeowner had converted the home into a duplex and then applied for an application and received a positive recommendation from staff. So I mean, it does happen, and in the subdivisions that we have nowadays as well, we actually- we actually plan for certain amounts to be multiple residential.
Yeah, councillor Thompson, then councillor Wing?
Yes, actually, maybe the Calagiro subdivision was a poor example, because the first house on the right-hand side is actually a two-family home.
It is.
So, that exists even there. But I think, I think this situation is not new. It even mentions in the report that this goes back to the 1980s. It actually, I believe, predates bylaw 79200, where this unit was already there. The problem here is, there was a dispute between two neighbors. A complaint was put into the city, and the applicant, on his own, vacated it, cleaned it up until such time as this could come here, because he purchased it when there were three units there. This is not something new. This isn't something all of a sudden, oh, my God, there are three units there. It's been like that since 1979. And he vacated it to make sure it comes through the proper process. He was unaware that it was not a legal entity at the time, and actually vacated it on his own. He knows he has to upgrade the facility to agree with the fire department, to make sure that the windows are changed, the access, and he is willing to do that and would have to do that through a building permit application. But the building size remains identical. It was three units. So, all we are doing is legalizing something that has been there for the last 30-some-odd years.
Thank you. Councillor Wing?
Yes, it really reminds me of my own situation. I bought something which I knew was illegal, and I vacated the illegal unit, and I never rented it out again. It doesn't even exist anymore. But I really understand this gentleman's concern about ruining a single-family neighborhood, and it can happen very easily. All those where you see four units, six units, three units. You know, all too often, you end up with a former single-family home being illegally converted. And I've seen illegal conversions to four-unit homes. You know, all it takes is a few of these on a street, and it totally changes the character of the neighborhood. And you've got planning staff coming in with a nice little map like this, going four-unit dwelling, three-unit dwelling. And what people bought into as a single-family neighborhood is no longer that, because too much of this stuff is going on. And, you know, it's like, I know we don't zone people, but there is a problem with the type of tenants who come with a certain mindset, a certain set of behavior patterns. And, you know, they can have a PhD for all I care, but, you know, it's just certain behaviors go along with certain types of dwelling units. And that is his concern, and I understand it, because I've seen the same pattern elsewhere. And I just don't think it's fair to the people in that neighborhood who are maintaining their homes and trying to enjoy it in the designation it was given years ago. Duplexes are okay, you know, R2 works. But if you start taking buildings that work as single-family and can work as duplexes with, you know, good stewardship by the landlord, and making them illegal triplexes, it really sets the neighborhood on a slippery slope. And when you take something like this, where, you know, where there's a seller unit involved and a poor track record, and there's already pressure from other units in the area that are just too densely occupied, it really creates a recipe for problems.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, then councillor Morocco?
Yes, I think the gentleman has already said that there are duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes in the same general area. So, what are we talking about here? Going, changing it to a duplex area? The transition has already taken place years ago. This is not something new or something different. It has been there for the last 30 years. And I still can't believe we're talking about tenant problems related to planning matters. You know, how do you, how do you interview a tenant and make sure that when they get into your place, it is an entirely different situation? I had a duplex on Wilmot Street. Nice young couple, said they were married, came in there, rented them, in fact, chose them over a bunch of other people. Turned out, they weren't married at all. And two months later, I got called down there by the police department, because the woman tried to stab the gentleman she was living with. Now, how do you control that? Are you telling me that's a planning matter?
Sounds like a married couple to me.
No, they weren't. Anyway, I can't believe we're having this conversation, but this is something that has been there. The area has been transformed. It's been in transition for 30 years. And I am sure that the applicant would be happy to have all of the interviews vetted through councillor Wing before they go into the apartment. That would probably work.
Okay, councillor Morocco?
Actually, your worship, I'll wait until a motion's been put on the floor.
Okay. Yes, sir. Was there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, my complaint is not necessarily people. I, that's out of my control. It's out of anybody's control, really, in a way. The residents of the building, of the dwelling. The thing is, what I'm more concerned with is taking an R2 area and turning it into a multiple-dwelling area, all right? Now, you've got just about a whole block there now. The block that I'm in, there's only one three-unit dwelling on the far corner of the buildings, all right? And I live at the corner of Maple and Stanley, all right? Now, what happened was the city turned around and auctioned off property that was designated as a greenbelt area, all right? And it has been vided into four lots, which it always was, I guess, but they sold off four building lots, and they deemed those lots R2. Now, what's the building bylaw on taking that area, and it's not even being built on yet, and turning that into an R6 or an R8 area and putting in a townhouse? That's what I don't want. That will ruin that area for the residents in that area that have single-family dwellings, all right? You have enough multiple dwellings in one block bordered by Elm Street, Stanley Street, and Bridge Street. Now, what's the ratio on new building? Or is there any, or any plan, or any bylaw?
Mr. Illich, I believe, is it 52 people per hectare? Is that what the number is for new development?
Well, that's the number for greenfield developments, so garner estates and, excuse me, areas like that. Now, the province will be looking to us by 2015 to have the 60-40 split that councillor Peter Angelo was asking about earlier. So, the built-up areas, a 60-40 split. The new developing areas, it's 52 people and jobs per hectare.
Okay. So, but appreciate your comments for tonight, sir.
Yes, thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant that would like to comment? Okay, seeing none. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm Al Haywood from the firm Matthews &amp; Cameron. I'll be brief, because a lot of it's been labored already. Basically, we're in agreement with the entire report put forth by planning staff and its recommendations. We have no argument with that. I just wanted to reiterate that this is a very modest intensification, and it's still deemed as low-density residential. The only complaint regarding the planning matters, which has been battered about, is about the overnight on-street parking. In the past, this has been a tandem driveway where cars have been parked behind one another. This will be a great improvement to it. You won't have cars being started up to move to allow one other tenant out. Currently, of the two tenants that are in there, only one has a car. I would suspect, as pointed out in the planning report, that maximum of three parking spots would be more than adequate for this development here. And it really isn't a development. It's really just existing, or recognizing what has been existing, as councillor Thompson pointed out. It's been there since the 80s. And again, my client's aware that with regard to the third unit, that he's, has to apply for a building permit, and it has to be brought up to code. And just as a point of information for council, we're talking about areas or newer areas or larger areas that have had intensification. One that I was involved with last year was in the Moretta subdivision on the corner of Geovina and St. Paul, where it was a large, single-family rezoning came into council for an R2. It was turned down by council, appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board, and approved at the board. You know, change happens. The province is mandating intensification, and these are the things we are going to see and in R1 zone areas.
That's a good point. I mean, we don't necessarily have the final say. If we contravene the planner's recommendation, they're oftentimes go to the OMB and oftentimes are overturned. So, you're right. This isn't necessarily the end of the line. Are there any questions or comments from council to the applicant? Councillor Thompson, okay, okay. Seeing none. The public meeting with respect to the zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. No further submissions pro or con will be allowed from the gallery or the public. Does remember, the council would like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd move the recommendation of the municipal staff.
Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Kerrio. Is there any comments? Councillor Morocco?
Your worship, I'm going to support the recommendation, because I know that the city does have very strict fire codes and that, and I'll have to make sure that they buy that, especially for a basement. I'm not big on the basement, but I have to say, I'm not here to pass judgment on whether people can afford to live in a basement or not, and sometimes, and unfortunately, we can't all live where we like to live, but we have to live where we can afford, so that's why I'm...
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll call, yes, councillor Wing?
What's the difference between a basement and a cellar?
That's a good question. We're gonna defer that to the planner. Difference between a basement and a cellar?
The basement, by definition, in our bylaw, is 50% of the wall of the, of the foundation is out of the ground. In this particular case, probably about 2/3 of the wall of the basement is underground, so it's termed a cellar. So, it's just how much of that foundation is in or out of the ground.
To that point, lower dwelling.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further comment, we'll take the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, one opposed. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to mayor's reports, announcements. I have a few. I'd like to start off by offering our condolences to Selena Volpatti, current regional councillor, former city councillor on the passing of her mother, Ada Poligato. Our thoughts and prayers are with councillor Volpatti and her family during this time. On the other side, we'd like to congratulate our clerk, Mr. Irafida, on the birth of Ryan Samuel Irafida, and we offer congratulations to Noel, to the clerk, Dean, and Allison, their daughter. So, congratulations. Family Day last Monday. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to spend time with their families last Monday. It was brought to our attention that our Gale Centre was not open this, this family day, and we've heard from our park staff that next family day, it will be open. We didn't have enough preparation time to be ready for this year. Although the rink at the Brink was open, and it was free for the public through the TD, next year, the arena will be open for family skate. There was a Valentine semi-formal on February 23 at St. Michael Catholic High School. Councillor Peter Angelo is the one that's instrumental in putting this event together. It benefits special need students from around the city and the region. It was a pleasure to attend, and it was a lot of fun as well. Daryl Evans today. I was able to meet with him. He's a member of the World Series-winning Detroit Tigers. And he is in town, and he will be supporting the Greater Niagara Baseball Association. I understand he also met with councillor Thompson today as well. He brought his World Series ring with him, and the GNBA is very, very excited that they'll have the support of this World Series winner, along with Max Suzuki, for their summer programs this year. As many of you may know, the GNBA won three Ontario Baseball Association titles the same day this past summer. And we believe it's the first time it's ever happened, but they're ready to step it up a notch to the next level. So, we're very thrilled to have some of these high-profile players. And as well, we're being told there's gonna bring some top players from Venezuela and other areas that are gonna come down this summer and work with the local baseball players, so it's pretty exciting. Tim Horton's Bowl for Kids' Sake for Big Brothers and Big Sisters was this past Saturday. I'd like to thank councillor Maves, councillor Gates, councillor Ianone, and Colonel Hank Hanke for joining us. It was a great show of support and another great year. We saw some great antics, and we'll leave it at that. Call it antics. I'm not sure if I saw any bowling clinics that day, but it was a lot of fun. Raised money and awareness for a very good cause, so thanks to everybody for coming out. Also, we're lucky this past week to help mayor, former mayor Bill Smetin, earn the title of Citizenship Judge. He's been called many things in his time. Councillor, mayor, alderman, and it was an honor for me to be there. It was February the 25th, along with Rob Nicholson and Police Chief Wendy Southall, as we helped them conduct the swearing-in of 58 new Canadians. It was a great day for Niagans. We're very happy for Bill Smetin. Now, we'll call him Judge Smetin, and we can't think of a person more fitting for that title. Scouts Canada Annual Cub Car Race was this past Saturday. This year's event was a blast, and I'm happy to let everyone know that in the final race at Niagara Square, the city beat the province. That's right. I had to go up against MPP Crater. And just before we started, I wanted to know who the kids were voting for, so I told them I'd do my best to make this week officially Chocolate Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Yeah, and our MPP Crater went on to offer them free driver's licenses at any age. Of course, they're too young to really appreciate a driver's license, and we won the race. And he accused me of cheating, because I took a Kleenex, and I kind of wiped the track a little bit to make sure it went quicker. But we had a lot of fun. It was a good day for the Scouts, and congratulations. As well, Saturday night, Tender Wishes had their gala fundraiser, and I was happy to have the support of councillor Morocco, who was there as well. And it was a good night. And of course, the mascot of Tender Wishes is a teddy bear, and who better than Teddy Mayor? You know, to be their Huggy Mayor, Teddy Mayor, whatever you want to call me, all the nicknames, that's fine. We'll see what nicknames we come up with next. Niagara Industrial Buyer-Seller Forum is March 3. Always an exciting time to support industry in Niagara. Crafted and hosted by our business development, the Buyer-Seller Forum once again boasts exceptional support from around the province, including Minister Pupatello, our Minister of Economic Development Trade, along with Mark Herniak, GM of Eastern Region Ford Canada. We're looking forward to a great event for this fourth-year running. Anybody interested should contact our business development office. As well, I have an announcement here. Mount Carmel is gonna be having a public meeting on a solar project they're gonna be having for the monastery Tuesday, the 8th of March, from 7:00 until 9:00 in the monastery dining room. For further information, just contact Mount Carmel regarding this solar project. Also of interest, this week is the beginning of our new garbage contract at the region. The new company, the main difference that you should note, number one, is that it will be a one-bag limit per household, and number two, the difference is recyclables will be picked up every week. It won't be a rotating basis. So, starting this week, make sure you have your stuff out the curb by 7:00 a.m. There's a new company with new drivers, new trucks, it's a whole new system. So, just to be safe, get out there at 7:00 a.m., and it doesn't matter. You're not gonna have to look at your neighbor's house to see if it's plastics or papers this time from here on in. For the next, for the term of the contract, it'll be all things concurrently. And if you haven't already, you should have received one of these collection guides in the mail. If you haven't already, make sure you pick one up, so you can track all the special weeks for branches and shrubs and appliances and everything else that they've got planned out. And lastly, Earth Hour is March the 26th at 8:30 p.m. It's a reminder that in the past, we've always supported Earth Hour. We encourage everyone to turn their lights off, turn their hydro down, their heat down, try to plan some nice family activities in the house, buy candlelight. And if you'd like, you can get the link. It's directly available on the city's website, or you can go to earthhourcanada.org if you'd like to participate or get some more information. So, that concludes our announcements for today. Thank you. Lot of announcements. All right, moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First item is downtown board of management.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Ianone. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any additional items for council consideration?
No, your worship.
Thank you. Reports. First off, we've got... Reports, first off, we've got hydro matters, and I would ask this...
Move the hydro report, accepting the resignations and the appointment of the new members on the holding company.
Okay, all right.
And also the annual director's resolutions.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion to move item one by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Ianone. We have comment by the clerk. I'm sorry, the solicitor, thank you.
The financial statements that were circulated, ones that were blanked, that actually the 2009 financial statement, the resolution that I received from the solicitors for the hydro holding corporation was actually, is actually to approve the 2010 financial statement. So in order to approve the 2010 financial statements until such time as council's had copies.
I think they're not even prepared yet. I think that's probably an error in the documentation going back and forth. It should be nine rather than 10, so that would be part of my motion.
So you're suggesting approving 2009?
Yes, yes. Yes, that's the one we...
Okay.
10 isn't ready yet.
Okay, so Counselor Ianone, you're agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Just move the reports.
It's unanimous?
Move the reports.
Well, next up, we've got budget, so I'm gonna call Counselor Peter Angelo up here to deal with the budget.
Just the remainder of the reports.
Okay, oh, the remainder of the reports?
Second to motion.
Okay, everybody, what other reports we've got? Just the property manager?
And the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Counselor Wing?
Is it including the property matters in the moving of the balance of the reports?
To the surplus, mayor. If you want it to be, you can make that motion. I mean, we ask, just through our notification process, the mayor's supposed to ask if there's anyone in the gallery who has an interest, unless Kathy, Steve, and Trent want to buy the property, which I assume they don't, you can make a motion.
It's me.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. All right, so I'll call up Counselor Peter Angelo to do the budget portion of our council meeting.
Thank you, worship, and our C I O, Mr. Todd, has a short presentation on PowerPoint that he'd like to play for council. Mr. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we'd like to do tonight is just give you, counsel, an update on the budget process. As you know, Mr. Harrison will be off for the next month. I'm gonna step in for the next two meetings and do that budget presentation on his behalf, so please bear with us. And I also have with us tonight Catherine Louis, who's our manager of corporate asset management, and she's here to assist us tonight if there's any detailed questions on some of the material that we provided for you. So I just would like to outline tonight, we're gonna do a little bit of a review of the timeline and where we are. The major issues we're gonna be faced with tonight are the labor and benefit costs, our debt servicing and interest costs. We're also gonna have a review of our materials, contracted services, and rents and financials. The new process that we're embarking on is we're attempting to tie the budget process to our strategic priorities, and those strategic initiatives, as you know, were approved by council just recently, and we are looking at sustainability, affordability, effectiveness, and efficiency within the budget process. Council has also decided in 2012 to commence with a new approach, which commonly is referred to as a zero-based budgeting approach, where we would go back to ground zero and start looking at every account and every expenditure we make. That will take some time, and we'll commence that actually right upon the completion of the 2011 budget process. The schedule that we've outlined for you, tonight we're looking at the labor, debt, and interest, materials, contract, services, rents, and financials. We'll proceed on March 21st by looking at transfers to reserve and capital, our amortization schedule, our grants to outside groups, and our non-tax revenues. We'd also like to get a little bit of an introduction to you that night on our utility budget. On April 4th, we'll have revenue discussions, we'll have more detail on the revenue side. Utility budget, we'd really like to have there for your review and approval, and give you an introduction on the capital budget, and hopefully by April 18th, we'll have final discussion and approval on the budget, and also approval on our capital budget that same evening. Just a little bit now on our spending history and year-to-year comparison as to where we are. If you look at our expenditures over the last four years, you can see that from 2007 to 2008, we had a spike of about close to $10 million that year. Don't let that number frighten you, because that was the year that transit was transferred over to the city operations and we consolidated the statement, so that's where that big jump comes. But you look, the trend from 2008 to 2010, we've actually had a reduction in our expenditures over the three-year period of close to $3 million, little over, I'm sorry, little over $2 million during that three-year period, with our expenditures being a little over $90 million last year. If I look at the, have you look at the year-to-year comparison, these are our estimates, and I'll just state to you, these are estimates that we're putting forward for council's consideration. The ones that we're gonna be examining tonight are salaries, employee benefits, the debt and interest payments, our materials, contracted services, and financials. The rest of that list, we'll be looking at next meeting on March 21st. But you can look at our overall expenditures based on the preliminary numbers we're presenting to you tonight. On the overall budget, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about $6 million, just slightly over $6 million. Now, if we just focus on the labor and benefits, our labor and benefit costs in 2010 made up about 50% of our overall city budget. That was slightly over $45 million in cost, and we're estimating those costs would increase this year to about $46,790,000. That will, though, based on our estimates, only occupy about 48% of our overall expenditures this year. Now, some of the factors that are contributing to this is that we have labor negotiations going on this year with a number of our bargaining units, we have movements through salary grids, we have ability or desire to maintain our existing service levels. We also have increases in our benefit costs, including our O M Rs, which is our pensionable benefits for every employee that's employed by the city. If you look at a summary of where that is, we're looking at an impact in this budget year of about $1.176 million. Again, that is an area where it's difficult to find any significant improvement over last year, but there are some decisions in there that council can make, and we can talk about those further. The next major issue of our budget this year that we should talk about tonight is our debt servicing cost, and to put it in perspective, our 2010 debt servicing costs were $4.6 million. We will see that debt service rise to $6.8 million this year, or an increase of $2.2 million in new debt service. And that debt servicing makes up about 7.1% of our overall expenditures for 2011. Now, just to put that in perspective, there's a number of municipalities that will deal with how they manage their debt. Some will have a guideline, there's a number of municipalities that use a 10% rule. Right now, our budget rule is rate, not a rule, but our budget forecast for this year is about 7.1%. Now, I just want to show you where that breaks down, because unfortunately, that number of spending impact, and we say here the ability to reduce, you have no ability to reduce that within your budget this year, simply because that has been debenture issues that have been committed by the corporation already, and that comes to about $2.2 million. And I'd like to just show you where that came from. We have Boys and Girls Club debt servicing this year. Boys and Girls Club will be finished this year. We've already forwarded the $2 million. They are using that as capital, so we have debt servicing on the Boys and Girls Club debt. We also have debt servicing on the Gale Centre. Our impact this year will be about $1.7 million. You can see that next year, the annualized cost of that debt servicing for 2012 will be just slightly over $2 million a year for the Gale Centre. And we have a large storm sur construction project in the Bridge Street area, and that will have about $213,000 in debt servicing. The overall debt servicing, again, just slightly over $2.2 million that will have to be accommodated in this year's budget. Now, this just gives you a bit of an idea from 2007 to 2011, where our debt and our debt servicing, broken down by principal and interest payments. So you can see in 2011, we'll be spending about $3.8 million in principal payments and around $3 million in interest payments. The next slide will give us an indication on where our expenditures are for next year. These are commitments that we have already. We have a fire system already committed. We'll have to start paying for that in 2012. We have some parks work. Where this parks debt comes from, you remember, we had all of the rink funding from last year. It was a good news story. We were able to leverage two-thirds funding from both the province and the federal government. Unfortunately, we didn't have our one-third, that had to be financed. That's what you see there tonight of $640,000. So we were spending $640,000 in new debt that actually got us about $1.2 million in federal provincial funding.
Excuse me, Mr. Todd, I have Counselor Thompson has a question.
Yes. Does your previous slide there regarding the dollars, does that include the reduction from the provincial grants that you're anticipating? Does it include the readjustment for the assessment for the casino? Does it take into consideration the million dollars from the M P C that hasn't come forward? Does any of that figure into this?
Not on this slide. This slide is simply...
You're talking about the previous one, don't it?
No, we haven't incorporated any of that. We'll talk about that...
So 7.1 could be substantially more.
Yeah, these are just, these are just our expenditure items. Some of those items you're talking about, Counselor, we're gonna bring all that in perspective to you when we talk about revenue, and I believe we had that slated for the April 4th meeting, where we'll get into more depth on all of the revenue side and some of the pressures on the revenue side.
What's the target date for the conclusion of the budget? Sometime in June?
April the 18th.
Okay.
So these are items here that we've committed to. Again, the museum project, we've got about $2 million in debt financing for the museum, and again, that was about a $10 million project that's under construction now. We've got $8 million for each from the province and the feds, and our contribution out of our budget was slightly over $2 million. So we have additional debt servicing of about $5.7 million coming in 2012 and 13, and just an estimate on what that debt servicing cost would be in those future budgets, around $742,000. So that just gives council a picture of the debt we've incurred up to this point and some of the future debt that we're expecting over the next two years on our major projects. The next slide will give you what we're projecting, and again, this is just on debt, none of the other financial issues we're talking about, in terms of debt servicing. And what we're projecting right here is that our debt servicing would cap out at 2012 at about $7.3 million. Put that into perspective, this year's budget is about $6.8 million, so in 2012, we're looking at about another $500,000 in debt servicing to service the current commitments that we already have on our books. What we however are projecting, though, is that our forecast based on some of our capital work for the next five years, based on capital expenditures that have been presented to us through the departments, we would look at a reduction in both the annual debt principal and interest payments. This is where we are going to bring council back to this slide after we've done the budget for this year, because we want to talk to you about a debt servicing policy, a debt strategy, on how we carry forward into future years. So you'll be seeing that slide again as we move forward. We want to look at a formal debt management plan, and as I indicated before, on that $2.2 million in debt that we've already issued, mainly on the Gale Centre and others, there's really no control over that, because that's committed funds, that those buildings are up and functioning, and now we have to start paying for them. So that's about $2.2 million. Now, you received some material on Friday, and under tab two in your larger binder, the first area I'd like to go to, to just give you a brief highlight of where we're at, we call it general materials. Now, the materials section of our budget makes up about 14.3% of our expenditures for 2011, and that's just down slightly from 14.5% in 2010. And at tab two, if you just go past the first orange page, the first sort of summary sheet gives you a little bit of an idea on what the major pressure points are. What we've tried to do here is give you an idea of where our major pressure points are, and I can tell you, fuel costs, insurance, and arenas are really where we see some variations from last year's budget. If we go into where that's broken down, our general materials, which are just miscellaneous purchases, it could be some furniture purchases, supplies, things of that nature, across the entire corporation, that part of the budget is up $263,000. You can see where some of the increases and decreases are, but what I'd like to point out to you, in this area of the budget, even though we're only up $263,000 in this area, our fuel purchases alone are up over $300,000. So even though we're, you can see the decreases, the bracketed amounts, where we're down in certain areas, but the big pressure areas, if you look, are municipal works and transportation. Well, that's because municipal works funds most of our fuel through either our fleet and our fire vehicles, our fuels, the fuel payments are through there. And then obviously, transportation, that's Carl's Transit Fleet, and again, you're looking at about $237,000. So even though we're up $263,000 here, our fuel purchases alone are up approximately $306,000 based on the increased price of diesel fuel from last budget year to this budget year. So that has a major impact on our budget. We've broken out for you to give you an idea of where some of our professional fees, conferences, memberships, and subscriptions are. And again, we've broken it down by council and different departments, but the bottom line is, the projected budget right now is looking at additional spending in that combined area of $164,000. And if you want, we can provide greater detail on that or breakdown if you like, but that would be professional development, conferences, and memberships and subscriptions. Our utilities, up $34,000 across the corporation. Not too bad of a story, but there are some increases. We did gain some savings in the recreation area, mainly because of some of the efficiencies in the arenas, but again, you can see that some of the major operating departments like fire, municipal works, and transportation, there are additional utility costs that we will incur, and that will account for about a $34,000 increase. Insurance, we had a report to council back about a month or so ago, where we have a $238,000 increase in our insurance costs. This just shows you a distribution across the corporation as to where those increases are, and we've said to council that we will be reporting back. We're just in the final throes of putting out a R F P for our insurance services and insurance broker services that will be hopefully gaining some savings for us in the second quarter of the year, but we will not know until those tender results come in. We'll be looking at our insurance coverages and our different deductibles, and we'll have that report back, so that any changes or shifts that we need to make in our insurance portfolio, that we'll be making that sometime before July 1st of this year. Advertising is another area, some minor increases there of $23,000. Again, you can see where that distribution is, a lot of it in the planning and business development area, where we see some increases of $19,000, $20,000 for the year. Now, the next area is contract services, and the increases in some of those areas are some of our construction inspections, we have the Trans Cab, that supports tourism policy, actually, that's, that should be over in the materials area, so that, but that was about $20,000 that we have in the budget. You can see here that our increases here are about $47,000. You can see here that our increases here are about $47,000 for the year, and that's a budget impact of about 0.45%. Again, there's the distribution on our contracted services. The $55,000 reduction up in the top part, that's really for reductions in the election. Municipal works has about a $30,000 decrease, and again, there's miscellaneous increases throughout the other departments, but overall, in that contracted services area, we're up $47,000 over last year's budget. Our rents and financial increase section, some of the contributing factors on that is our photocopier leases for the corporation. I believe that's up about $30,000, I'm sorry, about $13,000 for the year. We have placed back in about $100,000 in CIP grant funding that was taken out of the budget last year. We put $100,000 back in here. If you go to look at the detailed sheet, even though we're up in this section 54, roughly $54,000, in certain areas like the CIP grants, the next slide will just show the detailed breakout. For example, we're up $100,000 in that for the CIP, but again, in fire and administrative services, we're down in those areas by $22,000 and $33,000 respectively. So, the net increase is $54,000 in our rents and financials. So, if I put this in perspective for you, our total materials, contract services, rents, and financials, we spend around $24 million a year, and the increased spending on that portion of the budget is about $827,000, or about a 3.3% expenditure increase. Now, again, of that $800,000, a little over $300,000 of that is in fuel prices alone, and, you know, that is going to be something that's going to be very difficult for us to decrease, even though it's an increased cost. You do have your fleet to run, you have your fire vehicles to run, you have your transit system to run, and very difficult with the increased diesel prices for us to find any savings in that area. And that represents a 1.2% increase in our overall increase in this area. So, 1.2% of the 3.3% increase is attributable strictly to fuel. Now, again, this represents about 25% of our overall budget for 2010, and last year represented about 26% of our overall budget. Now, in summary, what we presented to you just very quickly in the PowerPoint tonight, the details are in your orange sheets that we circulated on Friday to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. But this just puts in perspective as to where we are and some of the pressures we have on the budget on the expenditure side. We've indicated that our labor and benefit impact, we expect to be somewhere slightly over $1 million. That is a 1.3% increase in our expenditure budget. Our debt servicing, which again is mainly the Gale Center, Boys and Girls Club, that represents a 2.5% increase in expenditures on this budget, and then materials and contracts and financials represents about a 0.9% increase on the budget. So, the numbers that we have in front of you tonight as a starting point represent about a 4.7% increase in our expenditures, and that is about a $4.2 million increase over last year's operating expenses of slightly over $90 million. So, Mr. Chair, that's just a brief summary of where we are in terms of the presentation tonight. At the next meeting, we'll be presenting more of our detailed expenditures and also get into some other areas of the budget, certainly looking for any direction Counsel may have for us tonight, certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have on any specific parts of these four sections, or sorry, three main sections of our budget.
And I think the one slide that you put up showed a gap of around $6 million.
Yes.
And, and I think almost 4.3 of it has been identified here, so...
About, yes, about 4, 4.2 of it here, Mr. Chair. The original slide, I think, was around 6.2. So, there, there is still about $2 more million in increased spending on the remaining items that we'll present to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions to Counsel? Counsel Aronony, Counsel Wing?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd just like a copy of Mr. Todd's presentation.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we'll get that circulated to you. We just finished putting that together over the weekend, so, sorry, it's, we'll get it to you for sure.
Counsel Wing?
Are we going to be getting any kind of breakdown later of, you know, what's discretionary versus core in here, just so, because I think we're going to, you know, following Counselor Thompson's remarks about what to expect on the revenue side and what we're seeing on the expenditure side, I think we're going to be looking to do some framing later so that we can keep taxes increases down.
What we're trying to do, and I know next year, we, we're going to take the approach of the zero base, what we've tried to do here in this presentation tonight is to try to give you, and even if you look at the slide here, on our major, what we call our object codes, which are all those items that are listed down the left-hand side, we've tried to say, we'll, we'll give you a, a good understanding of where the increases are for each of those areas. If we take the 2010 just as our base, we're saying, we'll, we'll identify to you the pressure areas, in other words, the increased spending over last year in each of those major object codes. So, for example, in salary and benefits, we know that our increased costs are going to be about one, a little over $1 million. That is in contract negotiation settlements we have, we have benefit increases, and we have grid movement. So, those are things that we can certainly detail to you, and they're, they are detailed in, in the sheets, but we're just trying to focus in to give you an idea. There are some areas in here that aren't as big a pressure, but for example, like the fuel, there's $300,000 in extra spending on fuel that, quite honest with you, you know, we really can't do much about that. I mean, that's, it, it could get worse, and we had, we had an estimate on, and maybe Catherine can give us that, what we actually spent on fuel last year. I think Catherine has that number. But just to put it in perspective, we're just estimating that on current prices, and it could be worse. So, Catherine, do you have the number just on our fuel spending from last year?
That's almost $2 million.
Okay. So, if we're looking at $2.1 million that we spent last year in fuel alone, we're forecasting, you know, about $300,000 in additional, additional spending on, on year alone. So, it's a big ticket item, and again, these are just some of the benefit pressures. I guess we wanted to put it in perspective because, you know, I guess what I'd really, you know, like the average citizen to, to understand is that, you know, with inflation running somewhere in that 2% or 2.5% range...
...barrel program, and that funding in the amount of $40,000 be included in the 2011 municipal utility budget for these programs. Under MW 2011-10, New Bern Road Bridge Project Cost Sharing Referral to the Canadian Transportation Agency, that Counsel authorized staff to file an application with the Canadian Transportation Agency to resolve outstanding cost sharing issues with CN for the replacement of the New Bern Road Bridge. Under PD 2011-14, find location for the Queen Victoria Monument, that the Queen Victoria Monument be located at the northeast corner of Niagara Falls History Museum site. And under 2011-01, Fire Services Full-Time Recruitment, that the issue of fire services, the issue of fire service recruitment be referred back to staff to return with a recruitment policy based on Counsel's decision in the committee of the whole meeting tonight, and I so move.
Thank you, Counsel Aronony, seconded by Counsel Morocco. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? And then ratification of in-camera recommendations by the clerk?
Yes, Your Worship, regarding, there's four recommendations related to the Board of Museums, and those are that the Board of Museums be dissolved and replaced with the Museum Advisory Board of Counsel, that staff of the Board of Museums become part of the Recreation and Culture Department of the City of Niagara Falls, effective immediately, that the current Board of Museums continue in the role of Museum Advisory Board of Counsel until such time as Counsel has conducted a reappointment process, and that the current Board of Museums bylaw be repealed.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Gates. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Bylaws, the city clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws listed?
No, Your Worship.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-26 to 2011-29, read a first time.
Second and third to Worship.
Okay. Second and third by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Gates. All those in favor? Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Bylaws 2011-26 to 2011-29, read a second and third time and pass.
Thank you. New business? Do we have any new business tonight? Counsel Carrio?
Quick, When Your Worship, I noticed we got a letter from Nestle Company talking about the plastic bottles. My question would be, do we know the impact of the lost revenue that we've had by banning plastic bottles from our vending machines? Is there a number? We lost revenue?
That's a good question. We'll ask the CIO to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We wouldn't have a, we've not tried to track that. The only thing we can say is that when we did do our vending machine contract, it did show lower revenues. It was a couple of, a couple of thousand dollars difference on our vending machine contracts because they could not provide water, but nothing definitive. That's about all the information we would have on that.
And I also did, Counsel Carrio, send them a reply. I don't know if you saw that, that was in the package as well, just basically letting them know that, you know, we're reaffirming our position on where things are at. They wanted to let us know that Nestle's making a concerted effort to use less plastic in their bottles and to divert more plastic from the landfill and whatnot. We encouraged them and said, "That's great, but our decision stays." And until, you know, there's any further direction from this Counsel, that's the way it's going to be. Counsel Wing?
On that point, I actually brought the letter with me. I was going to compliment you on it, and I know you ended it with much success with their continued efforts in environmental advocacy. That was great.
Thank you.
What do you have for you? Who's that?
My bottle of water. Are you with me on that ticket?
I had to come over and hug you, Counsel, Counsel Wing. Is there any other new business? Motion for adjournment? Counsel Thompson, seconded Counsel Morocco. All those in favor? Thank you.
...property being proposed for the semi-detached. It has existed for that way for many years. This is, shows the nature of the land uses surrounding the property. We have the hydro corridor to the north and surrounded by residential to the west, south, and to the east. The nature of the properties in the area are all single detached development. This will be the first in the slightly intensification of the semi-detached. The nature of land uses in the area, there are some townhouses to the east and sort of further past, and we've seen over the course of a few years where the intensification of residential development has, has occurred with some town housing and some other multiple family development. This is a site plan showing the nature of the semi-detached. We have a, the farmhouse, as I mentioned, which is two, two and a half stories high. The property to the west is a one-story bungalow, and we'll address the side yard setback in a, in a moment. This shows us an air photograph that kind of really shows the nature of the uses in the area, the subject property. This was the access to the back of the former farmhouse and barns back there many years ago. You've got single detached dwellings all along Dunn Street. Just for some verbiage to talk about the proposal, we're dealing with an 800 square meter property. The applicant's requesting the R2 single-family and two-family zone, which permits single, semi-detached dwellings. The current zoning is residential, single-family, 1C, which permits only single detached dwellings. The nature of the request of changes is to recognize the existing lot frontage at 18 meters is required to a 16.6 meters, which is what's on the lot currently. They're also asking for a reduced side yard setback for a two-story dwelling from 1.8 meters to 1.2 meters. We, we are opposed from planning perspective of that. We'd like to see the 1.8 meters retained, particularly as it affects the property on the west, and to establish the front yard setback at nine meters. Circulation of comments, we did not receive any negative comments from any agency. We did receive a letter of concern from the neighbor, I believe that's the neighbor to the west. There was concerns about increased traffic, servicing, flood potential, and a former well that was on the property. Municipal works has, will require a grading plan as part of the building permit stage to address drainage concerns. There had been a history of sewage backup in the past that has been rectified, to my knowledge, with the separation of the sanitary and the storm sewer that occurred along Dunn Street, I think about a few years ago now, and my understanding is the one chap that had a problem in the past has not had a problem since that, that occurred. The Ministry of Environment has reported that they have no record of the well that has been reportedly understood to be on the property. We did have the public or the neighborhood open house on January 5th of this year. No neighbors were in attendance to that meeting. Part of the planning analysis, the provincial policy statement obviously supports this kind of intensification, even though it's a kind of a minor intensification. Our official plan designates the land as residential, which permits a whole range of housing types, and would certainly support this zoning change. It is along a collector road where we like to see intensification happen. The proposed dwelling, we think, is compatible with the neighborhood. Dwelling generally is consistent with the properties in the, as far as height and coverage and landscaping, and the municipal services are available that could service this property. The zoning to R2 permits both the single detached and semi-detached. The R2 standards will be applied. The items, as I mentioned before, that are not in compliance would be to recognize the existing lot frontage, which is 16.6 meters. The requirement for a semi-detached is 18 meters. The construction of the dwelling will be nine meters from the front yard. That equates to the frontage of the buildings on either side of the property. And the side yard, as I mentioned, for a two-story dwelling is typically 1.8 meters. The applicant has requested 1.2. We feel that it's important that we still apply the 1.8 meters typically required for a two-story dwelling. As far as the city's strategic priority, the applicant, application will satisfy the Counsel's strategic priority by providing residential intensification and permitting infill development that takes place and takes advantage of existing infrastructure capacities.